This conference will now be recorded.
Great, this is Director Houston calling this meeting to order. I do see we have a quorum, so we have Member Gray and Alternate Williams. I also see Director Alvarez is here, and I think Director Dear, there he is, he just popped on. Wow, look at that, he's actually on the camera. So we have our quorum, and actually, all of us are here. Any public comment?
Chairman, Houston, we have no public comment.
Okay, any presentation?
No, we have no presentations today, Chairman.
Okay, and it looks like we have nothing on the action calendar either.
No, we have nothing on the action calendar.
Okay, great, so on the information calendar, we will move to item A, 6A, which is the legislative update.
Yes, and we will have the first part of this legislative update. We are very happy to be joined by our federal lobbyists, the pride of Ashburn, North Carolina, Pete Eivich, where it's snowing, expecting six to eight inches of snow. And about probably an hour to the other direction, we have Jeff Coleman, who's in Annapolis, Maryland, joining us, we're really looking forward to their end of the year post-election report. And I think I'll just hand it over to EJ to say a few words to introduce, do a more formal introduction. EJ?
Yes, thank you, Patrick, members of the committee and board. Obviously, we're very lucky to have VSA here today to provide a little bit of an overview of where our congressional officers and members are in today's policy-driven activity as far as a lame duck session, as well as kind of the results of an election that just recently saw the conclusion of the Electoral College vote, so we now have a president-elect. I just wanted to point out really quickly, and not to put them on the spot, but I want to point out that both Pete and Jeff have been very active. I know that as we watch the news and we see a lot of activity, you know, whether it's political drama or whatnot, I wanted to point out that Pete and Jeff have been extremely busy on our behalf, really moving forward as far as our appropriations go and potential funding in the 2021 work plan. I know they're going to talk a little bit about that today, but I really want to point that out and say thank you to them because it's a lot of work rounding up a lot of staff members from all the different offices during this COVID pandemic as far as getting the meetings with them. So I want to say thank you to them and just provide that information because I know that they're not going to toot their own horn very much here, but they have been doing a lot of work on our behalf. So with that, I'll hand it over to both Pete and Jeff.
Thanks, EJ. So really quickly, before we jump into what things are going to look like on January the 3rd, 2021, I want to go through sort of the four big-ticket items that still have to be resolved prior to Christmas. And that's related to, first of all, these are in no particular order, but they all do have to be resolved. COVID-19 response package is number one. FY2021 appropriations, hopefully, the Water Resources Development Act of 2020, and the National Defense Authorization Act. So working our way through those, the National Defense Authorization Act provides for the defense of the homeland. That has passed both the House and the Senate, but the President has threatened to veto that piece of legislation over an issue completely unrelated to the NDA bill and the Department of Defense. He's threatened to veto the bill over what he calls the shield for big tech, liability shield for big tech. So to be determined what the President will do on the Defense Authorization Act. It passed by veto-proof majorities in both the House and the Senate. We have heard today that a final agreement, they may reach a final agreement on FY21 appropriations. That's important for West Basin because that'll kick off a 60-day shot clock on the Corps of Engineers' work plan. I'll let Pete talk a little more about that. So that will ensure that the federal government doesn't go into a shutdown and will fund the agencies through the end of the fiscal year, which is September 30th, 2021. Just by way of quick reminder, the current CR, the current funding resolution will expire on midnight Friday, December the 18th. The deadline, we're getting really close to the deadline. They may need to pass another short-term continuing resolution to extend funding, maybe into early next week, so their final bill can be passed into law, maybe Monday or Tuesday. The other two pieces that are probably going to, what we call, ride on the appropriations package first is the Water Resources Development Act of 2020. We hope this gets added as part of a 21 funding package. There's not a great deal of this directly, that will directly impact West Basin. Our big win for Worden was in 2018 when we modified the Harbor South Bay project, but there may be some tangential benefits once the Corps of Engineers gets the law implemented. And then the last piece, which again, at the end of last week, I was not optimistic, I'm a little more bullish today. They are hammering out the details on a COVID-19 response package. It will likely be smaller than the $3 trillion bill that the House had passed earlier in the year. It also looks like that there will be no liability protections and also very little of any state and local funding for state and local government. It does look like there will be direct data provided to small businesses and households. But again, the conversations are still taking place, but we may get to the final finality later today. In terms of shifting gears into the next Congress, so Joe Biden, his win was affirmed a couple of days ago at the Electoral College. He is referred to in Washington, DC as the McConnell Whisperer, and I'll get to that in a moment. So it's pretty clear that Joe Biden will likely be president, starting on January the 20th. Apparently, the Senate, there are still a couple of races that have yet to be determined. Those are moving to runoffs, and both of those are in Georgia. So right now, you've got a Senate that's, starting on January the 3rd, will be 50 Republicans and 48 Democrats. I would say the Republicans probably have the slight edge in both of those Georgia seats, but this is 2020, and it's been a really weird year. And so I'm a little fearful of making a prediction on where that's going to shake out. But if, you know, if the Democrats pick up those two seats, that'll be a 50-50 tie in the Senate, and Vice President Kamala Harris in California will be the tie-breaking vote. So that would give the Democrats an advantage if they could pick up those two Senate seats in Georgia. The night before Election Day in the House, I think everybody was sort of expecting the Democrats were going to flip at least 15 Republican seats into their camp. That did not happen. So when we start the new Congress on January the 3rd, the Democrats will have a House majority of 223 seats, 212 seats. Today, it's 237 to 198, so the majority in the House will slim considerably. So at any given time, the majority will have a five-vote swing on the House floor, and that's if everybody shows up for the vote. And it also looks like at least two, perhaps three Democrat members are going to move on to the Biden administration. So the 223 votes today couldn't be smaller before the 117th Congress even convenes on the 3rd of January. And the Republicans had a very slim majority also the first two years of the Bush administration, starting in 2001. And they overcame their differences by having to work together. And so I'm a little bullish on the first 10, 11 months of 2021. I think the parties are going to work together and get some pretty good legislation enacted that will likely directly benefit West Basin, and I'll get to that in a minute, and Pete will further expand on that. In terms of the leadership, you know, once again, in the House, you've got two California members in leadership, both Speaker Pelosi and Minority Leader McCarthy. So once again, remaining a staple of House leadership. You know, the committees, we're going to see a change in terms of the style, not necessarily the substance of the Appropriations Committee. Rosa DeLoro is now going to be, she's from Connecticut, she'll be the chairman of the House Appropriations Committee, with Nita Lowey from New York retiring.
It looks like Jeff froze.
Also likely seeing some shuffling. And you'll look at the Subcommittee Simpson, who's been off due to term limits. And it's unclear right now which Republican member will take the ranking members.
Jeff, you froze up there for a little bit after you
I'm sorry?
You froze up a little bit after you mentioned who the new head of the Appropriations Committee would be. Did you just go back? We lost you for a minute.
Okay, yeah, sure thing, thanks for catching that. So this is what happens when you have like eight people in your house all on the web at the same time, I think. So Rosa DeLoro from Connecticut will be the chairwoman of the House Appropriations Committee. Nita Lowey is retiring. Mister DeLoro is from Connecticut, so you may see a little bit of a different style, but the substance will be the same. There will likely be some shakeups at the Subcommittee level of appropriations, particularly on the Republican side of the aisle. Mike Simpson, who's been a friend of water infrastructure for the last six years, has to rotate off his ranking. And it's unclear right now who's going to replace him. The Subcommittee game, it's kind of like when they try to figure that out in the House, it's kind of like being on the deck of a battleship in heavy seas while under fire. All the pieces have to fit, and it takes a little while to get them all to get in the right spot. The other big news on the House side is that the ranking member of the House Water Resources and Environment Committee at House Transportation and Infrastructure, Bruce Wasserman from Arkansas, is moving over to be the ranking Republican at the House Natural Resources Committee. So it's been the first time you've had sort of a member who's not from a Bureau of State as the head of the Republican side of the aisle of the House Natural Resources Committee. So we imagine that he will provide some deference to, particularly to California Republicans on some of these Bureau of Reclamation issues. But we'll keep you posted on who the Subcommittee ranking members will be as the weeks move on here. In the Senate, Mitch McConnell and Chuck Schumer will remain their respective leaderships for the Republicans and the Democrats. There will be some, again, like the House, some big changes on the committees that have jurisdiction over water. Senator Murkowski, who was the chairwoman of the Senate Energy and Natural Resources Committee, which has jurisdiction over the Bureau, she was term limited, and she has to step down. Senator Barasso from Wyoming has now taken that, will likely take that spot as the next chairman. He comes from Wyoming, Bureau of State, so again, you may see a little bit of a different style there. But that then opens up the committee where he was the chairman, which was the Environment and Public Works Committee. That has jurisdiction over the Army Corps of Engineers and a lot of the surface infrastructure programs. Kelly Moore Capito from West Virginia will roll over and take that spot. The other big California news from last week was that Senator Feinstein is stepping away from her duties as ranking member at the Senate Judiciary Committee. But we still think she'll remain at the Senate Appropriations Committee. It's just a question if she stays at the Energy and Water Subcommittee or if she decides to, there's an opening at the Defense Subcommittee. She may decide to take the Defense Appropriations Subcommittee. So that will hopefully shake out here in a few weeks. So with that, you know, happy to, you know, again, big changes at the committees for water infrastructure. I think, you know, in terms of looking at, you know, the other Californians that we pay very close attention to. Maxine Waters, we anticipate she'll be the chairwoman at the Financial Services Committee again, and Congressman Shulman, who will remain as chairman at the House Intelligence Committee. In terms of what it looks like for Congress in the next year, next two years, infrastructure is always in season. You know, a big driver in this is the expiration of the Highway Trust Fund in September 2021. And that sort of, that could lead to a large infrastructure package similar to what we saw earlier in the year in the House, HR2, or Moving America Forward Act, you know, which was multimodal across all modes of infrastructure, from water to aviation to surface. So that may have the horsepower, moving out ahead early. You know, the Biden administration wants to do a stimulus package. They want to do infrastructure, they want to do these bills early. Again, we're very optimistic of the first part of the 117th Congress in 2021. There is a relationship between Biden and McConnell. Whenever the Obama administration needed a difficult negotiation to be carried out, they would send Joe Biden to the Senate. And also Mitch McConnell was the only Republican senator that went to bow Biden's funeral. So there is a friendship there that is rare in Washington, DC. And so we expect some bipartisanship, at least in the first year. And I think infrastructure has a really good chance at moving ahead. And again, the margins are so slim, just like the early years of the Bush administration from 2000 to 2002. But the parties, if they want to accomplish anything, they're going to have to work together. And infrastructure is one of those issues, and I'll give you the great example. Infrastructure is one of those issues that it binds everybody together, and everybody, both parties wins when infrastructure bills move forward. And I know this because the last four Congresses, particularly the last three, there's been a Water Resources Development Act that has been enacted as one of the last bills in a Congress. And so they like to move the bill late, they like to move the bill around Christmas time because that's when the best deals are cut. Somebody this morning on a call had the great line, and I'll end there with a dear, that deals get cut when you get close to the holidays and you start smelling the jet fuel from the members of Congress going wheels up to go home for the holidays. So with that, I'll turn it over to Pete, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff. And again, I want to thank you, Committee Chair Houston, and Board President Gray, Directors Williams, Dear, and Alvarez, and General Manager Shields. And Director Alvarez, look forward to meeting you in person once we, obviously, get beyond these, you know, the COVID pandemic restrictions. And so anyway, welcome to West Basin. So with my remarks, I'm going to first spend a little time highlighting early activity and some nominations of interest that President-elect Biden has either made or individuals he's considering for various posts. As has been widely reported, President-elect Biden has begun to build out his administration as he prepares to take office in January. Several cabinet nominations have been announced over the last several weeks, with a few key ones even touching down yesterday, including his naming of former Obama EPA Administrator Gina McCarthy to be the White House's Domestic Climate Policy Chief. So some of Biden's nominees would be historic firsts in their roles, including Janet Yellen as the first female Treasury Secretary, General Lloyd Austin as the first black Secretary of Defense, and Pete Buttigieg, who would be the first openly gay Cabinet Secretary to be confirmed by the Senate as the Secretary of Transportation. His announcement came yesterday. I know there was, at one point, some speculation that Mayor Garcia might be, was a candidate for that role, but Biden tapped Buttigieg for that. So so far, two Californians have been tapped for, you know, very high-profile roles. Of course, Senator Kamala Harris, soon to be Vice President Harris, and State Attorney General Javier Becerra was nominated to lead the Department of Health and Human Services. And I think, as you all know, prior to his time as California's chief law enforcement officer, he served 24 years in Congress. So despite early speculation that Mary Nichols was the leading candidate to be the next EPA administrator, recent reports have surfaced that, you know, California's top air regulator is no longer considered the frontrunner. That change comes after Biden's team seemingly was receiving complaints about Nichols' record on protecting California's low-income and communities of color that face disproportionately high levels of pollution. And then on the right, you know, while Biden's nominee to lead EPA will most likely be controversial among conservatives on Capitol Hill, Nichols' record of favoring an aggressive regulatory approach to curbing emissions is expected, was expected to especially rankle Senate Republicans. And then, you know, while there was some pre-election chatter that some California House members might be in line for roles in a future Biden administration, as Jeff had outlined, there's the GOP House election gains greatly narrowed the Democrats' majority in that chamber. And that has hindered Biden's ability to path House Democrats to serve in his administration. You know, he has already selected two House Democrats. One is Representative Marcia Fudge of Ohio, who lead the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and Cedric Richmond of Louisiana to serve directly in the White House. Speaker Pelosi and other House Democratic leaders have then employed, implored Biden to refrain from snagging any more of its members to work in his administration. Although regardless of that, entreaties from Speaker Pelosi, we're hearing that Biden has set his sights on naming Representative Deb Haaland of New Mexico. She's in her second term of representing the Albuquerque area to be his Secretary of Department of Interior. Haaland, if selected, would be the first Native American ever to lead that agency. You know, her nomination has been championed by Native American advocacy groups and several key members of the House, including the chairman of the House Natural Resources Committee, Rahul Brawa. If by chance he doesn't go with Haaland, and we're kind of hearing rumors that that might even happen today, the other candidate under consideration is New Mexico, retiring New Mexico Senator Tom Udall. So I think we'll know soon on Department of Interior. It's too early to tell which individuals will be given serious consideration to be the next Commissioner of Reclamation. One name that has surfaced for this, or perhaps another post within the Department of Interior, is Tanya Trujillo. Trujillo served as a counsel to the Interior Department's Assistant Secretary for Water and Science during the Obama administration. And over the past several years, she has been the executive director of California, I'm sorry, of the Colorado River Board of California. Then in terms of congressional, the congressional confirmation process for Biden's political appointees, you know, we again turn our eyes to what Jeff mentioned, which is the outcome of the Georgia senatorial races. You know, Biden's nominees will face an easier ride if the Democratic candidates prevail in the Georgia runoffs, as that would give Democrats majority status in the Senate. If those races go the other way, GOP control in the Senate could slow or derail Biden's nomination picks to conservatives, at least those ones that conservatives may view as being considered, you know, too far left. Well, my personal belief is that Javier Becerra will be confirmed, even in a Republican-controlled Senate. There have been some grumblings about his record by GOP conservatives. So, you know, we'll be sure to keep you posted on further activity, developments, future Biden administration announcements of interest as we move forward toward January 20th and beyond. In terms of regulatory policy expectations from a Biden administration, it's not a stretch to make the statement that when President-elect Joe Biden takes office in January, it will represent a clear break from the Trump administration in regard to environmental policy. The question becomes, you know, how big will the break be? And what will be the priorities for water? I'm not going to go into great detail on this topic, but generally speaking, as it relates to Western water issues, I think we should expect friendlier policies toward water conservation, reuse, and desalinization efforts. Also, policies and actions will focus on the impact of climate change on water supply, as well as emphasize efficiency and resiliency measures. And I think we can also expect greater scrutiny on large-scale water storage projects. On a couple of specific areas, the long battle over waters of the US regulation, which deals with federal protection for the nation's wetlands and streams, will continue on. Industry ranching and ag interests like the direction that the Trump administration took on that rule, while environmental groups strongly opposed it. A lot of near-term activity really related to WOTUS will probably initially be playing out in court battles. Other topic I'll hit is PFOS chemical pollution, as that's emerged as a top federal water issue over the last two years. The upcoming Biden administration has committed to tackle this issue by designating certain PFOS chemicals as superfund hazardous substances and also establishing maximum contaminant levels for two of the most studied of those PFOS chemicals, named PFOS and PFOA. So we'll be seeing an active regulatory agenda over the next four years. As these actions and policies evolve and unfold over time, we'll be sure to keep you up to date on those regulations or executive orders which have a nexus of water-related operations and deliveries. So from there, I'm going to pivot topics and give an overview of our specific efforts associated with securing additional funding for West Basin's Harbor South Bay project. Two years ago, through the support of West Basin's congressional delegation in the House and Senate, Congress increased the authorization of the district's Harbor South Bay recycling project from $35 million to $70 million. And that favorable provision was contained in a major federal water resource bill that Jeff had mentioned for the Army Corps of Engineers, the Water Resources Development Act.
Pete, just like to mention, for our board packet, we're on page seven, if you want to see hard copy for everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you.
So then, following the authorization provision being included in Ward of 2018, West Basin then began engaging with the Army Corps of Engineers to request annual funding and components of the Harbor South Bay expansion effort. In last year's Army Corps work plan, which is one of their budget documents, $1 million was included for the Harbor South Bay project. And West Basin staff is currently working with Army Corps L.A. District to allocate that funding for some portion of the project. As Jeff had mentioned in his report, you know, we're hoping and expecting Congress to pass an FY21 omnibus appropriations measure later this week or this weekend. As part of that legislation, we anticipate there will be in the neighborhood of $100 million, hopefully more, allocated to the Army Corps program, which the Harbor South Bay project is eligible to apply for funding through. And then after enactment of this congressional spending bill this month, the Army Corps will have 60 days to release that budget document we refer to as the work plan. And West Basin is applying for $5 million to be included in the FY21 work plan to support construction of two pending lateral projects, the North Gerdina Recycling Water Lateral and Mills Park Recycled Water Lateral. So to generate support for Harbor South Bay's funding request, we have been conducting virtual meetings this month with staff members from each of West Basin's congressional delegation offices. As part of the meeting, we have been updating the staffers on the overall project, explaining the specific lateral projects, which will be funded in the $5 million request, if that is secured, and then asking their bosses to consider sending a letter to the leadership of the Army Corps of Engineers in support of that funding request. So we're just about done with all of those meetings. We have two remaining, and have provided the congressional offices with a template draft letter of support, which they can use. And just to quickly run through the delegation offices we have met with, and then the two we'll also be meeting with, they include Representative Maxine Waters' office, Representative Ted Lieu's office, Karen Bass, Representative Annette Barrigan, Adam Schiff, Representative Loenthall, Representative Lucille Lordboy-Allard, and then on the Senate side, obviously, Senator Feinstein. And we even met with Senator Harris's staff as well. well. Um, so, uh, and then, you know, wanted to also note that in addition to the congressional office meetings, we also met with uh virtually with key personnel uh this month at the Army Corps Headquarters in Washington DC. Uh, that was a very fruitful and productive exchange. Um, we just wanted to note that EJ Caldwell led each of these meetings and did a fantastic job in explaining the benefits of, of the project and anticipated future work. Um, we've received positive feedback from each of the offices we met with, uh, and are working to have the final congressional project funding support letters uh transmitted to the Army Corps by the end of this month. And so we'll be sure to keep you posted uh on this effort, and we'll provide copies uh of the final congressional support letters once we receive them. Um, one just other item I just wanted to note, and we're going to keep you up to date on this, there has been um talk that um uh congressional earmarks uh which have been on a pause or moratorium since 2011. There's again talk about um reinstituting earmarks. Uh, there seems to be um a lot of positive, positive momentum, at least on the House side, uh that, that they will be restored in some form or fashion. Uh, if that is the case, we will, we'll be, of course, uh providing you updates on that and giving you the details uh of how, uh, of how they, they may be returning to Congress. So um, and then also how that may impact, you know, our specific funding requests uh related to Harbor South Bay and, and other, other projects as well. The last item I just wanted to, to mention, um, you know, we, we wanted to inform you that uh there is an additional member of the Vance Coyic team who is working with Jeff and I to help West Basin with its federal priorities in Washington, and that individual is Ashley Strobel, who's a, who is now a manager of uh government relations at our firm. She, she joined our company this fall. Uh, prior to Ashley's arrival at Vance Coyic, she spent three years at another lobbying firm in Washington DC on a range of issues. She's a Southern California native from the San Diego area and graduated from Arizona State. Uh, we apologize, uh, she isn't on this uh meeting call for self-introduction, uh, but hopefully uh you'll, you'll get to meet her in person uh once we get beyond the COVID precautions sometime in 2021, if you know, fingers crossed. Uh, or if not in person, we'll look to um for the next virtual meeting for the opportunity for you to, to meet her. Um, so uh with that, that, that concludes my remarks. I mean, I guess I'll just uh end by saying, you know, we'll, we'll also keep you up to date on, you know, when procedures start to change in Congress related to um, you know, in-person meetings again. Uh, most congressional staff uh do, are, are continuing to, to work at home. Uh, they can come into the office when needed, and there, some do skeleton crews, but, you know, outside visitors are discouraged from coming in, so all of our meetings have, have been virtual. Um, but um, you know, at some point, that's, that's going to change, and, and we'll talk about that. And I guess I might as well just point out, there's over the last 24 hours, I mean, I think it's no surprise that on, for the inauguration event, um, you know, Joe Biden's um presidential inauguration team announced that um, uh, that they are going to, uh, they're encouraging the public just to, to watch it virtually. They're, they're not encouraging people to come into DC. I think we just heard that member offices are only getting a ticket for themselves and one other ticket. So um, so it's going to be, you know, quite different on, on that inauguration front as well. But um, so with that, Beth and I look forward to your questions and um, and anything else we can do for you.
Excellent. Great, thank you so much, both Pete and Jeff, and uh I want to open it up to my colleagues, of course, uh, you know, giving privilege to Member Gray uh first, but uh Director Gray, if you have any questions or comments, uh, please go ahead.
Yeah, I do, but I, I'm going to defer to the other board members and I'll make mine afterwards. Thank you.
Okay, so uh, any other board member have a question or a comment?
Okay. All right, then, thank you, Director Yussa. I didn't hear any other board members. First, let me say thank you to Jeff and Pete. It's great to see your faces, even though we're not in person. So great to see that you're both healthy and safe. Um, you know, just, just, uh, we have a new director on the board, and I just want to make these comments that, uh, that I, I truly do appreciate the efforts that both of you have made, your, your company, because you've always been accessible, you've been knowledgeable of the issue, and just hearing your report this morning just speaks to the fact that you're very thorough in what you do on our behalf, and so thank you very much. You certainly know the key issues on behalf of West Basin, and you have the relationships with the different legislators and their, their staff to make sure that our message is, is taken, uh, you know, to those offices, and so that we can be successful in terms of what our issues are and what our, our goals are. So thank you very much. Really do appreciate your efforts. Even in times of COVID-19, you continue to do excellent work, so thank you very, very much. And thank you, EJ, your partner with them, representing West Basin, you do an outstanding job. Uh, you've always done that, and so thank you for continuing to be that liaison with uh, with Pete and Jeff uh in terms of representing us. And thank you, Patrick, obviously, you're the lead on everything that we do, so thank you, Patrick, too, for that, because, you know, having uh, uh, you know, reaching our goal in terms of key legislation, and certainly that the legislation that provides funding for our project is very important to the agency, so thank you for what you all do in that regard. You've given a very thorough report, I've taken a lot of notes, and so I'll just ask a few questions as I kind of go through my notes. Um, Jeff, I, I heard you talk about, you know, certainly the two seats, Senate seats that are going to be held with special election in, in Georgia, and those are very important seats, so um, and then I, and I have heard, I have heard on the news that the Republicans kind of have a, have an edge on that, but because we're in COVID and, and whatever else, you never really know what will happen, but if it does, uh, if it, if it, if Democrats are successful, tell me again how that impacts the Senate. I think you said it's 40, 50 now, what did you tell me?
Great, great question, so I probably could have explained that a little better. Um, so right now, uh, the Senate is, is, for the, for the next Congress, it would be 50 Republicans and 48 Democrats. So they convene the Congress on January the 3rd, that's a Sunday, and then Georgia has the runoff on January the 5th. So if both the Republicans prevail, it would be a 52 Republican, 48 Democrat Senate. If, and I think prevailing wisdom is, but the, the seats are going to go one way or another, you're not going to see a, a ticket, you're not going to see the ticket split, you're not going to see the one Democrat and one Republican, so. But if the Democrats pick up those seats, uh, that will lead to a 50-50 Senate, 50 Republicans, 50 Democrats, and then Kamala Harris, as President of the Senate, and which is her role as Vice President, she will be the tie-breaking vote on, on any Senate vote that requires her, her tie-break. So um, you know, now, now senators are, 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 are interesting, they, they don't, it, it's not a homogeneous voting block. Um, just because one party has the majority doesn't mean that, you know, you're automatically going to win. The margins are so thin that I think there's going to be a lot of deal cutting that needs to take place, no matter who wins those two seats. Um, so, but yeah, there, there's going to be an opportunity, if the Democrats pick up those seats, that Kamala Harris is going to play a much bigger role as Vice President than a lot of us had originally thought of.
Right, right, right. Uh, you also mentioned that it may be a spirit of bipartisanship in the Congress, um, and you talked about someone, I forgot who the person was that attended Beau Biden's funeral, which implied that there's a relationship with the President and lack. Who was that person you mentioned?
So that's uh the current Senate Majority Leader Mitch McConnell.
Oh, yeah.
From Kentucky.
Right, right, and that's really key. So um, and then you talked about water infrastructure, Maxine is still going to be the Chair of Finance, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and uh, uh, but, but the key thing, you know, is that you guys are doing a great job, you're continuing to be engaged even with the COVID-19, and, 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 and making sure that staff of the legislators are engaged and they have our information is very key, because those are front-line votes before you get to the, to the actual legislator. So that's the great strategy right now, so thank you for doing that. And uh, and, and Pete, uh, you talked about the nominations, uh, uh, the Secretary of Interior, uh, the, and that's, um, I forget the name of the person, but a Native American, and then you talk about potential commissioner, what was, what was the names of those two people?
Uh, yeah, so for in, interior, the seem, seemingly as of, as of yesterday or today, the frontrunner is Representative Deb Haaland, H-A-A-L-A-N-D of, of New Mexico. Um, she, she does, uh, she is a Native American, and um, yeah, so they really, they were, you know, it, it's, it's just been, I think she would have already been named if it weren't for this issue that's going on in the House where Speaker Pelosi doesn't want to lose any, any more Democrats, even though that seat will ultimately go Democrat, and the two seats that they've, Biden's already picked uh up from other, other House members will ultimately have Democrats um elected in those seats. It will be a stretch of time that, you know, she, you lose those, those people, so um, so she, she's the frontrunner, if it's not her, a former, uh, retiring member, um, Tom Udall's been under consideration, there's some other names as well, but um, those, those two seem to come up, come up the most. And then um, I think I had mentioned, we don't really know on, on, on um, the Commissioner for the Bureau of Reclamation, um, Tanya Trujillo, um, who's, uh, she's on there on Biden's Department of Interior, what's called a transition team. Um, and, you know, she serves on the Colorado River, uh, uh, yeah, board uh, uh, for California. She's um, you know, she's someone that um, uh, is very into sustainability issues, and since she's on that transition team, you know, her name is just obviously considered as someone who might be working in Department of Interior, so. More and more names will start to surface over, over time, and so we'll, we'll, we'll certainly plug that in for you guys once we get those names.
Okay, what's her name again, Pete? Tanya, what, what's her last name?
Uh, Trujillo, um, and I'll, um, let me make sure I spell it properly for you.
But, but she's on Biden's transition team, I, I can look it up, that's okay.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I can find it.
It's T-R-U-J-I-L-L-O.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Executive Director of the California, California River Board of California.
Great. All right, well, that's all the questions. Again, I'm, I'm sure that we will continue to have, you know, um, interaction with you guys, but again, thank you for the work that you do, so thank you both again.
Uh, Board President Gray, thank you so much, and thank you for your comments, we appreciate that. Jeff and I are extremely grateful to, to be advocating for West Basin, it's, and then you guys have an incredible full-package team there, um, from, from the board to the staff, and um, yes, it has, it has been a very odd year, and we really do look forward to seeing you guys again in person, so, um, and it's, 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 it's at least great to, to connect with you this way, and, um, and again, you, you hope everyone stays safe and um have, have happy holidays and stay in touch with us, we'll be in touch with you.
Thank you both, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Trujillo.
But you're not off the hook yet, Pete and Jeff?
I know, I know, I wasn't going to leave you yet, I wasn't going to leave you yet.
That's not the sign-off yet.
Turn this camera off.
I will, thank you, President Gray, um, I will, I have a, just a handful of questions, nothing, nothing too long-winded or anything, but I want to ask if my colleagues have any other things, um, thoughts, comments, otherwise I'll launch into just a few things. Okay, so um, I completely agree with everything our president said, uh, you guys always are doing a very thorough job on our behalf, and even now in this difficult time, and people can't see each other in person, and, and we know how important that is to uh, to building those relationships, but at the same time, um, I have a couple questions, some of these things you sort of touched on, but follow-up, and one is, and maybe this might be more for EJ, but just to remind the board, and also because we do have a new board member, Director Alvarez, the two projects that we're talking about, um, if someone could just briefly describe those to us again, the North Gardena Recycled Water Lateral, and also the, the Mills Park Recycled Water Lateral.
So Patrick, maybe I'll introduce it, and maybe if you have any additional comments, you can go ahead and add in. Uh, but the two projects are, are great because it reintroduces our relationship with the US Army Corps. Uh, as I recall, we have not built uh anything with them, in partnership with them, in several years, partly due to the earmark moratorium, uh, but also increasing our authorization. So the two projects will build off of our existing lines, you'll recall that we did construct the South Gardena Lateral, so this would actually uh extend up above that. Uh, you might, uh, let me pull up the, uh, so it would connect to actually two uh existing locations, one of which is Perry Middle School, and I'm going to say the second one, I hope I, I don't mispronounce it, but I know Director Dura will correct me if I do, Moss-Fukai Park. Uh, so you'll get about 16 and a half acre feet, that's roughly 50 households worth of recycled water, and it's relatively small project at $3.6 million. The second would also be, uh, as you pointed out, the Mills, Mills Park Recycled Water Lateral, uh, estimated project cost of $2.1 million, uh, and that would actually produce about 35 acre feet, and that would serve uh Mills Memorial Park as well as Curtis Middle School uh there in the city of Carson. So you have two, what I would call relatively, uh, what, you know, the, the bread and butter of what West Basin's relationship was with the US Army Corps. We would construct additional lateral, both of them are, are a little over 3,000 feet of lateral to be installed, and we'd get those things connected possibly within about 16 to 18 months, uh, depending on the funding that we receive. And that will actually allow West Basin to move forward with some of our larger-scale projects, including the Canetown Lateral.
Okay, excellent, that answered my question. Um, a couple of things, and, and Jeff and Pete, so what approximately is the timeline of the confirmation process? Um, and then, once that, for the most part, is accomplished, I mean, how soon do things get moving again in Washington?
Jeff, I'll, I'll, I'll start, and, and you could follow up if I, if I miss any important details here, but um, just generally speaking, the, you know, immediately after January 20th, uh, they, they will go into, um, the Senate will begin hearings on the cabinet-level nominees, the top-level picks, the, you know, that are, are, are the ones that uh will go first. And um, you know, and I, I think that, um, you know, again, how, how smooth these go and, and how, um, you know, how quickly they get in, just one fa, is it one factor, as I, I mentioned, is the outcome of the, the Georgia races, and um, because with the, whether the Democrats have control of the Senate or GOP has control of the Senate. But there's a number of, I mean, I think there's a number of uh senators on both sides that are just who, who believe that there should be a lot of deference to the president to pick, you know, generally who he, he wants into his cabinet. Uh, but I also think President Biden has taken this into account, that either way, the, the margins are narrow, uh, and he's looking to put in as many very confirmable nominees. Uh, you know, how, how long it takes is, is, say, I mean, you, but the nomination process goes on, you know, because you, you, you obviously get the cabinet-level ones go, you know, come up first, or any White House ones that need to be confirmed, and then there's the sub-cabinet-level political appointees, you know, all the way down to the Bureau of, uh, uh, the Commissioner of Reclamation. You know, I think, I think two years ago, I think it took, I think it wasn't until November of 2017 that Brenda Berman finally got confirmed. Ultimately, sometimes over time, politics starts to play into some of the other nominations, so um, you know, it, for, for a lot of those, it could go on for a while. Jeff, what, what's your, what's your take on that?
So I had some, I had some connection issues, but I think, but the one thing I would just would restate is that the Congress will reconvene So I had some, I had some connection issues, but I think the one thing I would just would restate is that the Congress will reconvene more than two weeks before the president is inaugurated. So then Congress will get a head start on the administration. You know, I know that the Biden administration has had conversations with TNI Chairman Peter DeFazio in the House. They want to move an infrastructure package very early. They are talking about doing something at the committee level, maybe as early as February, and then House passage sometime in March. And so I, I think, you know, the Senate may take a little while, you know, it has a reputation as the cooling saucer, if you will. And so I think, you know, that they, because Congress is going to get a two and a half week head start on the new administration, I think, you know, as they get organized, they'll be able to hit the ground running very quickly in the House. They don't have to, the House, you know, by nature, doesn't have to take up the nominations. They don't, they don't participate in the confirmation process per the Constitution. So they'll be able to actually get out, get out ahead of the, of the administration and the, and the Senate. And I apologize for my connection problems.
No, no worries. I, I heard you perfectly fine. No, but thank you both on that, gentlemen. And I think I'm down to one or two last questions, but one of them, and I saw this in the news last week, and I see it was highlighted in your, in your letter to us, just explained, so in the Word of Package that did get passed, what does this mean about not including any sections on drinking water and clean water? What is, what exactly does that mean? And what does it mean for West Basin and other water districts like us?
So the Senate bill, when they passed their bills, they had two bills that they moved out of committee. There was one that was the Traditional Water Resources Development Act that included provisions directly related to the Army Corps of Engineers and then made some modifications to some of the financing programs under the Clean Water Act. The Senate then moved a second package at that same markup that did very similar things, but to the drinking water, the Safe Drinking Water Act. When the House and Senate met to negotiate a final Word of Package, those provisions that were in the drinking water bill and the wastewater bill, the clean water bill, were left on the cutting room floor. And so, for instance, Director Houston, in the clean water package, there was a reauthorization of the Clean Water Safe Revolving Loan Fund. There were numerous grant programs added to the Safe Drinking Water Act. So those, those projects, and live to fight another day, will probably be resurrected again in the next Congress. I will say that, you know, the, the Water Resources Development Acts that I would have worked on since 2007, only one of those bills ever included anything related to the Bureau, related to safe drinking water, related to wastewater, and that was Word of, when 2016. Since, you know, two, since about 1986, that's the only bill, the only Water Resources Development Act that included drinking water and wastewater provisions. So, you know, yes, we would like to see these programs enacted, but I think a change in strategy may be necessary. I don't know that the Water Resources Development Act is the most appropriate legislation for that. I do think if you look at, you know, some of the analysis that Pete and I had, had done earlier in the year on HR2, the House infrastructure package, I can see a path forward for some of the Safe Drinking Water Act and some of the Clean Water Act provisions in that bill. I think that, you know, the administrative, and it may, and it may not even be new programs, sir. It may be, you know, just sort of beefing up the funding for existing programs.
Okay. Okay, great. One last question. I didn't see Congress member Napolitano on this roster. I mean, is she still going to be doing the same things on her subcommittees? And is she also still part of our outreach of, you know, congressional delegates?
No, she's, she's definitely within, she's definitely on our, sort of our, our, on our target list, no question. You know, they're, they are, you know, now that they've sort of, the dust has settled on who's going to be the, who's going to be chairing what committees, they will now begin working on the, on the subcommittees. We haven't heard anything about her leaving Water Resources and Environment. We, we still think she'll be the, be the chair there. So we're, you know, and let, you know, something could happen. I mean, you know, the, the subcommittee memberships are a little tricky, particularly when you get to the chairman and the ranking members and, and how they pick, you know, the Democrats typically use a, a seniority based system, but it's not strict. They, they not always use seniority for those positions. So, but we anticipate she'll be, she'll remain as chair.
Okay. Okay. Do we circulate that letter through her office too, or, or not?
Yeah. Yeah. So, so I'll give you a little bit of a, there's, she was very helpful, of course, in, in 2018. Because she was at that time the ranking member of the Water and Environment Subcommittee on TNI, which is where that, the, the authorization of the, of the 35 to 75 billion had to go, go through her, her subcommittee. She didn't sign the letter, but behind the scenes, her, her staff, Joe Sheehan, others were working, had it and helped us to get advanced that. You know, we've been in discussions with Joe in her office and basically on the funding side of, of it, as we move forward now into work plan funding year to year, we do let her offices know what we're, we're providing. But Joe said they have other work plan specific requests that emanate specifically from her district. And so, you know, it was there for their druthers that they want to kind of focus on those specific projects as they write those 21 work, or the, the work plan letters, support letters. So, yeah.
Yeah. No, that makes, makes good sense. Okay. So my, my final comment, and thanks for all the updates and it keeps changing almost by the day, but a lot of Western state leaders, you know, from these different, whether they're senators, congress members, other high-profile folks going into the administration. But it looks like there'll be a lot of firing power coming from the West, which I hope is going to be beneficial to, to California and to us. Even with, if, if it ends up being Senator Udall or whomever in these key roles. So I know that you guys will keep us posted, but I think we'll all be anxious to strengthen and develop those relationships once people are in place. You know, not just on behalf of West Basin, but on behalf of the, the other clients you all have and, and the water community as a whole. So, yeah, I'm just looking forward to what the next steps are and when the dust does settle and the, you know, when everything comes together. And, and lastly, you already mentioned it, of course, I don't see any in-person meetings happening anytime soon whatsoever or travel. I certainly see that there'll probably be a lot of virtuals and one-on-ones and, and the things that we can all do the best of our ability. And then maybe whatever happens come fall and then into the 2022. So it's just going to be a really interesting new year with a new Congress starting up and a new president. But anyway, for what it's worth, I really say thank you to both of you, as well as your whole team and to, you know, to Stuart. We are so appreciative. And I always enjoy your light-ups. They're extremely thorough. And I know that EJ does a great job working with you. So, you know, please know that, you know. Thank you, EJ. You know, we know that you're our on-the-ground person here. And we look forward to that time when, when we'll see you out here or we're over there. But, you know, one, one step at a time. Let's get through the pandemic first.
True. Chair Houston, thank you so much. And thank you.
Chair Houston, can I ask one more question? This Director Gray, can you hear me?
Your President Gray, go ahead.
Thank you. I had a question about the earmarks. When do you think that discussion will happen where there's some kind of decision and how would that impact a funding request going forward?
Jeff, if I'm wrong here, you, you chime in, but I think they're going to have to address that early in, in January because the, you know, a part appropriations process has to start moving, moving forward in the, in the spring or even earlier. So I think we're going to expect to hear something in, in, in the first couple of weeks of, of, of January. What do you think, Jeff?
Yeah. The only thing I've had is they've got a, they've got a, the, the House particularly has to pass a rules package. I think they will likely have to make some modifications to the existing rules related to earmarks. While the House rules, you can earmark, there are protocols in each one of the respective parties that they abide by. But I do think at a minimum, they're going to have to change the rules package. The rules package gets voted on for the first, because they vote on, on the third or the fourth. And so that will speak, provide a little more guidance to the earmark discussion. And then I think ultimately it will be up to the committees to decide how they're gonna, how they're going to carry out earmarks. And then you're faced with, you know, right now, the speaker has not sort of weighed in on the issue. I know the Majority Leader in the House has, he wants earmarks to come back. The Speaker is not. She's not spoken out on earmarks one way or the other. And the Senate, they've got a permanent ban on earmarks. So I don't know sort of how they, how the two chambers will ultimately reconcile legislation if one of the chambers has earmark provisions and the other one doesn't. So these are the things that will be kind of interesting to move forward. I will say that, you know, Pete and I both served in Congress for members when you had earmarks. And then we worked in Congress when you didn't have earmarks. I think Pete and I are of the mind that if somebody could just tell us what the rules are, we'll follow the rules, we'll still be successful. You just got to tell us what the rules are so we know what, how to play by them.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Be safe.
Thank you so much. And just really appreciate it. You too. And, and Chair Houston, just to answer your one question, yeah, to comment on your one statement in terms of, yeah, I mean, you're right. I mean, the next, the next phase is we will be busy next year in terms of engagement with the, these new administration officials. So it will be an active year, you know, working with, working with, with the new Biden administration and obviously with Congress too. So it's, it's, we'll see how that, that goes. So, yeah. Thank you too for your comments as well. Truly appreciate it.
Thank you. Take care. Be safe, you guys. Take care. Thank you, President Houston.
Thank you, gentlemen, both. We appreciate you being here in person to provide a brief to us. So happy holidays and we will see you next year. All right?
Yeah. Stay safe. Happy holidays to you too. And happy new year.
You too.
Happy new year. Goodbye all. Thank you. They're warm in the snow.
All right. Now we will jump to the state legislative update.
Yes. So that was a great report from the guys. So we'll jump back to the state report and we have that on packet page number five. That's our normal written report from Neemel Pappas and Associates. And EJ will walk us through some of the highlights of that. And by the way, EJ, great job working in COVID times with our federal lobbyists, as you just heard, they've been instrumental in a lot of coordination. Thank you for that. Go ahead with your report on Neemel Pappas State Lobby Report.
No, thank you, Patrick. Chair Houston, members of the committee and board, and a special welcome to Director Alvarez for joining us here at the Water Policy and Legislation Committee. As Pat, as Patrick said, packet page five begins the Neemel Pappas and Associates update. And I don't want to steal from them, but I will borrow from their, their initial line there. And they are back. The California State Legislature did reconvene last week. Typically in Sacramento, within the Capitol, they would call this housekeeping, swearing all of the members in. But there is a kind of a pomp and circumstance to it because as they're swearing those members in, they're also making specific committee assignments, identifying their, their key priorities. And of course, you see those legislators where they have key initiatives, introduce those bills. And that, of course, kicks off the 2021 legislative session. So obviously in swearing those members in, they did hold their housekeeping votes to reelect the President Pro Tem in the California State Senate. So Tony Atkins of San Diego was reelected, as was Speaker Anthony Rendon. So continuation and leadership provides stability within both houses, we believe. We hope that that'll carry on. And some of those bills that we worked on in this last legislative session will be re-initiated in this new session because their, their priorities were pretty much the same. Speaker Rendon spoke specifically about climate change policies to support the California labor and the economy. Obviously, you're going to hear a lot about that when the governor introduces his draft budget there in the first few weeks of January, you're going to see a specific drop in revenue or anticipated drop in revenue due to the COVID pandemic. That's going to realign kind of the, the financial aspects of the budget when you look at potential revenue coming in, in 2021. So as they, they work on a budget and then they, the governor and the leadership in both houses produce that may revise after tax revenues are identified, you're going to see kind of a shift as far as what the California State Legislature can do. And if they need potentially new revenue, which would potentially require a two-thirds majority vote, which Democrats have in both houses. Over on the Senate side, Housing announcing a Senate-led package to address the state's housing shortage crisis. This very much plays into what took place over the last two years, actually, over the sessions, really trying to identify opportunities for potential new housing, including additional density in the beach cities, which is kind of an area where I, I know our cities have been very active on. So we'll have to really track that. There is an implication, obviously, when, in relation to water, when you talk about higher density, you also have potential for additional water demand in those areas. I did want to highlight, and I know that, well, I believe that it was forwarded to you when we look at our committee assignments. I wanted to just point out a couple of things. Senate Pro Tem Tony Atkins really had a lot to work with. We did lose one of our state senators in Holly Mitchell, who's elected to the LA County Board of Supervisors. That obviously provided a significant key spot as she was very much involved with the California State Budget and the Senate, Senate Budget Committee. But I also wanted to highlight that our members have retained chairmanships of two key committees within the Senate. The environmental quality, what we would call Sen EQ, will continue to be Senator Ben Allen from Santa Monica. Also, when you get to Senate Natural Resources and Water, Senator Henry Stern from a little bit further up in Malibu will retain the chairmanship of that. And that's very important to West Basin because you start to see a lot of those initiatives when it comes to water play through those committees. Over on the Assembly side, in relation to water, not so much involvement, although Almar Succi, representing a large portion of the, the South Bay area, is very committed, obviously, to environmental issues and does now hold seats on Assembly Wild Parks and Wildlife. All of our bills that, that West Basin will be potentially active on will go through that committee. And of course, Assembly Member Eduardo Garcia will retain the chairmanship of that committee. Over on Assembly Natural Resources, it's also worth pointing out that Assembly, Assemblyman Almar Succi also serves there, as does Assemblywoman Laura Friedman, Metropolitan Water District Representative. And so we'll continue to work with their offices, obviously, when it comes to our, our state legislative issues. And then last but not least, I did want to highlight one bill that was introduced this past week. And you can call it great timing, but it was probably a planned timing. There was a Wildlife Prevention, Safe Drinking Water Drop Prepare Preparation and Flood Protection Bond Bill introduced. And again, it is Senate Bill 45. So it'll retain that same number. Does have a different ownership as far as the bill was introduced by Senator Portantino, along with Senator Ben Allen and Senators DeRazo and Stern. So two of the West Basin senators will play a key role in moving this legislation. And we have had a chance to quickly review it. This is something that West Basin staff would like to bring back next month for a potential position. And reviewing it, we kind of drilled down and focused more on the, the specific water issues. And if you look within Chapter Three of that legislation, you do see $100 million for recycled water. That was very specifically pulled from last year's Senate Bill 45. You'll also find $90 million for water data and groundwater monitoring. This, of course, is a very key issue for California's safe and affordable drinking water because identifying potential groundwater maintenance and recharge, obviously, in the state of California is very key. You might recall that last year's legislative session, West Basin's Board of Directors adopted a support and seek amendments to the water bond bills that were introduced. That allowed us to kind of open the door and be a part of the negotiations when it comes to that, those provisions. One of the key One of the key and very specific provisions that we saw was an increase in that water recycling, uh, chapter. Again, it was listed at a hundred million dollars last year. And West Basin, along with our, uh, stakeholders, we were advocating for up to, uh, one billion dollars and as low as seven hundred and fifty million dollars. And you might recall that we worked very closely with all of our stakeholder associations, including the Association of California Water Agencies, uh, California Water Reuse, uh, the California Association of Sanitation Agencies, as well as Cal D-Sell. So that would be something to consider for, for next month. Uh, again, uh, typically with these, uh, bond measures, it does require a two thirds majority vote, which means that, uh, while they do have the two thirds in both houses, uh, typically there's a great deal of negotiation going around uh, on these matters. And because of course it is a water related bond, uh, it is important that the water industry be reflected, uh, I think a little bit more within that bond. So potentially, uh, additional money for specific, uh, water. Uh, so with that, Mr. Chairman, that's really all I have, our state update. Uh, but I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, great. Thank you, EJ. Uh, very thorough. And, um, I'm going to open up the floor to any questions from my colleagues. Any questions, comments?
Director Houston.
Glad, yes, President Gray.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to thank EJ for the, uh, report this morning. It was very thorough and thank you for giving it this morning. Thank you. I have no questions.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Um, you know, I really don't have any questions. I thank you for that update on that, uh, proposed already being reintroduced. So obviously more to come. And, uh, thanks also for sending the lists of, uh, committee assignments. Um, always good to know who's in what role now. So, uh, everything is just starting, uh, probably in the same boat too, with a lot of virtual meetings, uh, probably knowing, traveling back and forth. We don't even know what the legislature's, you know, gonna, if they're gonna pare down some of the work they're trying to do. I would assume they will just because it's, it's just not convenient to, um, you know, you don't have people traveling and coming and seeing them and, and you just can't put together as many packages. Um, and then of course, there's just so much pressure on the, on the, uh, legislature and the governor, you know? Um, some of it good and some of it not good, but anyway. Um, well, with that, uh, I don't have any real questions. Uh, thanks for that update. Anybody else? Okay. All right. Let me just grab my agenda. So we're almost through. Uh, item six B, envoy the Metropolitan Water District report for November of 2020.
EJ, you're back.
Yes, thank you again, Patrick, uh, members of the committee and board. Uh, before you, uh, item number six B, you know, packet page fourteen, uh, begins our Metropolitan Water District update. Uh, typically, as you'll recall, we do highlight all the activities that took place in the preceding months of November. However, sometimes when there is something of, of great importance that happens and we do have time to amend the board memo, we always like to provide the, the most up to date information. Uh, so the memo is, uh, uh, kicked off with a December update from the Delta Convenance Project. Uh, this was obviously something that Metropolitan Water District, uh, took up, uh, just, uh, earlier this month. And as noted in the, uh, board memo on December eighth, the MWD did pledge its support for a project to modernize the increasing vulnerable infrastructure that delivers water supplies from Northern California, uh, through the Sacramento, uh, San Joaquin Delta to Southern California. Uh, they did authorize, uh, Metropolitan Water District to fund up to forty seven point two percent of the planning costs, uh, which are estimated over the next four years, uh, to an estimated one hundred and sixty point eight million dollars to be paid for on behalf of Metropolitan Water District. Uh, for those of you who had the opportunity to, uh, participate in the meeting or at least monitor it, uh, the public comment on this item, uh, lasted several hours when it came to the, the board meeting. Uh, you know, I think that, uh, I, I didn't keep a close tally, but I would say it was, you know, fifty fifty or, or very close to, uh, support, a lot of chambers, uh, a lot of, uh, labor unions, uh, highly supportive of this project and, uh, stimulating the economy. Uh, you did have, uh, again, roughly half of those speaking in opposition, uh, trying to, to track, who those agencies were and who those associations were. Uh, there were a number of different environmental stakeholders, uh, that, that are very active within the West Basin Service Area that did speak in opposition. Uh, this is kind of the, what Metropolitan Water District staff would have called, uh, the option two. Uh, there was discussion about actually funding a larger portion of the, uh, environmental, uh, and planning costs, uh, but chose to do the, the lesser of the two, uh, and basically focus on their share of those costs. So meaning the portion of the water that they would receive through, uh, a Delta commands project, that would be the amount that they would fund. Uh, so it was a, uh, a very, uh, long discussion as far as the public comment goes. But it is worth noting, uh, that just despite the, the several different opinions about it within, within the Metropolitan Water District Board, it was voted unanimously, uh, upon consent, uh, with very little discussion once it got to the board level. I think if you, you go back to the committee level, you, you heard a lot more, uh, comments from our directors and, and from directors in general. But, uh, it is important to note that this was a unanimous vote by the Metropolitan Water District Board. Uh, secondly, when it comes to regional water recycling, uh, program, this is obviously something that West Basin has been closely tracking because it is, uh, here within the West Basin Service Area. Uh, the primary investment in facilities would be here in Carson. And it is important to note that in November, at their board meeting, Metropolitan Water District voted to begin environmental planning work on the regional water recycling program. Uh, obviously, uh, this is an effort to really, uh, boost the development of local water supply, uh, through advanced treatment recycled water, uh, drastically reducing potential, uh, ocean discharge, uh, here in the San Monica Bay. You can see here within the memo that it would produce up to a hundred and fifty million gallons of water daily. Uh, that's a great deal of recycled water. And of course their, their immediate target would be to place some of that advanced rate of recycled water, uh, in the, uh, west coast and central basins. So provide, uh, water regionally and locally to our, our retailers. Uh, and, you know, further advance, advanced treatment and what we would call our indirect potable reuse with the potential for direct potable reuse down the road. Once those, uh, raw water augmentation regulations are not only, uh, produced by the State Water Resources Control Board, but ultimately adopted. So we'll continue to track that. And of course, uh, there was wide support from that. Uh, but as you might recall from our MWD caucus meeting, uh, this, this issue was actually, uh, at the time, uh, joined, uh, with another issue related to the Southern Nevada Water Authority. And, and basically building upon our efforts as far as, uh, the, the partnership with, uh, Metropolitan Water District and LA County Sanitation Districts. This would bring a third party into the fold, uh, being the Southern Nevada Water Authority that would fund an initial portion of the, the planning and, uh, expenses. Uh, there was a potential for, uh, approximately six million dollars to be funded to Metropolitan Water District for this effort. Uh, and I think that I could characterize the discussion as being kind of a question as to why now uh, versus kind of, uh, why not now? And really what it came down to was a lot of directors pointed out that this is kind of an interest free loan because it doesn't bind the parties to anything. Metropolitan Water District could easily refund the money back to the Southern Nevada Water Authority. Uh, but the idea of, uh, building that partnership now allowed them to get in on the ground level. I know that that was, uh, a significant talking point from, uh, Jeff Kitelinger, the general manager there at Metropolitan Water District, and provided an opportunity for them to, to fund and be a part of those studies to see if there was an opportunity for further partnerships. And by that I would mean that if, if they were to become a, a, a full, long-term partner on this project, uh, there is an opportunity to allow them to keep and retain water, uh, and of course, uh, from the Colorado River and allow them to take additional water in times of drought, uh, in exchange for funding a portion of this project. And again, if you look at the, the long-term goal of Metropolitan Water District with this project, it really is for IPR and DPR, so indirect and direct potable reuse, which would provide specific, uh, quantities of water for potable use. And that's ultimately when we talk about the investments in local water supply, we always try to kind of, uh, talk about the impacts to the amount or the total supply of potable water. Uh, so while this issue was tabled at the November, uh, meeting, I did want to point out the December update. Uh, this item, uh, directing the general manager to enter into that agreement, uh, ultimately was approved by the board in December uh, and did pass, uh, through the board. Uh, so Metropolitan Water District will now be working with, uh, Southern Nevada Water Authority, uh, on, uh, the potential for this, this contract. So I don't know if anybody has any specific questions about, uh, those two items before I kind of jump into some of the other items. Uh, I can take those questions now or, or proceed.
Any questions? Okay. Okay. Go ahead, EJ, please.
Well, I think, uh, moving forward, I think that the biggest, uh, topic of discussion is, uh, the IRP. Uh, and of course, how that relates to the LRP, the Local Resources Program. Obviously Metropolitan Water, Water District doesn't have a long-term funding mechanism, uh, for that. But when we start to analyze the IRP, which really looks at the potential total demand, uh, for Metropolitan Water District's area, and of course the future supply to determine whether there's any supply gap. And I think right now from Metropolitan Water District's perspective, they're beginning to look at the, uh, the water supply update. And if they can, uh, forward, uh, in the packet, I believe it's packet page twenty.
Yeah, I think so. Go ahead. There you go.
You can see now that, uh, we're starting to look at the new water year. And ultimately, uh, this kind of shows exactly, uh, what Metropolitan Water District's been talking about is that, oh, we do see fluctuating, uh, weather patterns. And, uh, if of course this is a La Niña year and we are expecting, uh, low snowpack and, and low precipitation, uh, this is kind of where we start to see that. And you can see over on the left-hand side, uh, the twenty twenty Colorado River. Uh, you know, uh, lake Powell, like mead, uh, are typically, uh, right in this range of, of forty-five and thirty-nine percent. So, so you're, you're not seeing anything there, uh, but you can also see up in the, uh, top left-hand corner, uh, the Upper Colorado River Basin. And we talked about snow. And really, uh, there, there's nothing to discuss. Uh, they did get a dusting of snow, I think, very early on. I think it was actually a late, late October, uh, which was early. But you really haven't seen, uh, the significant snowfall. And if you move over to the center, uh, graphs, you can see the, uh, state water project. You know, Lake Orville is down. We always see that because they're preparing for the, uh, additional, uh, snowfall and potential capacity, uh, there in Orville. You can see San Luis Reservoir. Uh, again, also very low, but again, that's part of the preparation. Uh, but Castaic Lake and, uh, DVL, uh, down on the lower left-hand, uh, portions, uh, very healthy. And I'll talk a little bit about that because again, we had, uh, another historic put as far as our storage goes, uh, in twenty twenty. Uh, but if you go back to the top, top of this, um, center graph, you can see that, uh, snowfall has really been, uh, nothing to mention. Uh, there was talk about, uh, potential storms, but even if you look at the forecast, you're talking about very short-lived, uh, storms, potentially one day here and there. And again, a snowfall for, for a couple of hours rather than that two or three day snowfall. So while there is snow, if you go up to the Mammoth, uh, Ski Resort and, and Big Bear is primarily man-made snow. Uh, and, and you're not going to get those great powder runs that you, you might be hoping for. And then off to the left-hand side, you can see again, uh, when we talk about MWD storage and reserve levels, three point one million, uh, acre feet, uh, really does set us up for the potential to withstand, uh, several years of drought. Uh, again, we're, we're working with all of our partners, uh, when, when you talk, when you talk about the state water project and the contractors, as well as our, uh, Colorado River partners, whether it be in the, uh, upper basin and lower basin. Uh, we are expecting, uh, a great deal of supply coming from both of those. So to have that three point one million acre feet from Metropolitan Water District is extremely healthy. And you can see just below that at the Diamond Valley Lake Storage, you know, this is why that investment was made, uh, years ago. When you talk about DVL, imagine back in the day when, when we didn't actually have that. Uh, so obviously visionary by the Metropolitan Water District Board and its member agencies, of which, uh, West Basin was a significant supporter of this project. So you can really see the benefits of that investment now. So with that, Chairman Houston, that's really all I have as far as the MWD update. Uh, but if you do have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, great. Thank you, EJ. Um, any questions or comments from the board colleagues? I don't see any or hear any. Um, I'll just say a couple of things and thank you. These reports are, are really thorough, EJ. Um, as I've been requesting over the past year, these met reports, um, just two things or three things I'll note. I, one of them is, uh, you are right because I was listening to the board meeting and a lot of folks called in regarding the tunnels and the funding or the one tunnel, the funding. And of course, uh, you know, I think the heavy majority of folks calling in were against anything moving forward, uh, from Metropolitan. And there were different options on the table. And, uh, ultimately option two is the one that moved forward unanimously for a, you know, a fairly lower amount of money and a percentage of the project. So, uh, you know, that was a, a big change from, I think, some of the, some of the things we did prior. Uh, and the other thing I do want to note is, uh, it was a very split vote on the Southern Nevada Water Authority vote. So that, that was a very narrow margin, uh, even though it did pass. So, uh, the board is, is quite divided on some of these projects. Um, and of course, lastly is that I think it was at that meeting and you noted it here that they did hire an outside firm to look into all these issues with the employees, uh, when it comes to harassment and, and sexual assault and so on and so forth. I think that was a good call as needed. Um, we'll be monitoring, you know, when we hear more information about that. So, uh, but again, these are much more thorough. I appreciate it. Uh, and with that, is there any other questions or comments from the board members?
Yeah, Director Houston, President Gray.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, first of all, thank you, EJ, for getting another thorough report. Uh, you're very accurate in, in your assessment of those two major items and certainly on the tunnel vote. Um, it was a lot of, of, of conversations and, uh, that went on with different folks to make sure that, um, that we, we did have a broad-based support for the tunnel. And so it was a, in a, uh, a lower, uh, percentage for Metropolitan and really referred to Table A, which is what was originally, uh, suggested. And, and EJ has explained all this for, for different folks who, who did have, do have an interest in water reliability with state project. So in LA, uh, certainly the city, the mayor was, obviously certainly interested in making sure that Metropolitan as well as the other member agencies did not pick up a bigger share if it was not necessary. But we all felt we needed to move forward. So all of that effort really, uh, uh, just equated to a broad-based support. And you know that this sport was written unanimous, even San Diego, uh, joined in with support for the one tunnel. So I thought that was, was, was really a good thing. And it, it, it's all about affordability. And we want to make sure that Metropolitan, uh, has committed to its fair share. And the state was involved in picking up, uh, making a commitment to get whatever portion that was left, that they would be involved in, in, in making sure that they would support effort, move planning effort forward. So I just want to say that, that a lot of effort went into making sure we had a broad-based support for the tunnel. Uh, and so that, that was a good thing. The, uh, Southern Nevada issue, I think some folks, uh, some of the members, uh, made, Tommy decided it was a good thing. So the majority of the board obviously voted to support that particular effort. And so I was happy about that. I do want to mention that, um, uh, if anyone was listening to the special meeting, I think it was yesterday, uh, and, and one of the, the main issue that we were looking at besides approving the agenda, uh, moving forward because the executive committee had a special board meeting, uh, regular board meeting, executive committee meeting. And it had to do with committee assignments by the chair. So it was a spirited discussion about that. Uh, the item was, was deferred. It was put on hold, up for further discussion, but I do want to bring that part up. So thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, um, thank you. Thank you, EJ, for this report and colleagues for questions, comments, and then moving forward. So closed session, we have no closed session, right, Patrick?
Yes, we do have closed session. Steve O'Neil is on the line.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we do, Mr. Chair, pursuant to government code section 54956.9, one item of potential litigation.
Oh, okay. Okay, so.
Separate call-in number for that closed session.
So you all have your separate call-in number if you could call in and I'll get it opened up in our closed session room back here. So we'll talk to you very soon.
I don't have a call-in number. This is the first I heard about this. So I don't, I don't know. I'm not aware.
Go ahead, Stephen.
If you could get that to, I'm looking through my inbox as well. I'm a little behind my inbox. If you, when you forward it to Director Houston, could you copy me as well?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, so then are we, as part of this meeting, obviously, not a separate board or whatever. So we're going to adjourn in the closed session and then we'll come back. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Okay. All right. We are adjourned to closed session.
We are back. Is everybody here, Pat?
Director Deere is calling in right now. He's just going to be one second. We'll be calling back in in just a second.
We are back. Is everybody here, Pat?
Director Deere is calling in right now. He's just going to be one second.
Patrick, is he calling in or not?
He said he was. We were just waiting for him right now, but I think he might be patient. That might be him.
This is Don Deere.
Hi, Don.
Okay, great. So we are back from closed session. So go counsel. I assume you need to report out.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The board met pursuant to government code section 54956.9 to discuss litigation. A report was given to the board and instruction was given to staff. That concludes my closed session report.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, directors' comments or future agenda items?
Do we have to, excuse me, this is Don Deere. Do we have to ratify our decision in closed session?
No, Director Deere, there was question given to staff.
You don't have to explain it. Just make it quick. Yes or no? No, you don't have to. Okay, thanks. All right. That's all.
Thank you. I see President Gray.
Right. Just want to thank staff if they're still on the line. I see Julian, administrative staff on the line, and the general manager. Thank you for all the reports today. Please convey that to your staff. Mr. Shields, thank you. And thank you, board members. And we have another meeting before the holidays, so I won't say happy holidays to you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other director want to make a comment? Now's the time. Okay. Okay, I apologize. I did not see when the agenda got reposted that a closed session but added. So I apologize for having missed that when we rescheduled the meeting. And with that, I also want to say thank you for a very great meeting. Unfortunately, our staff is no longer on this call except for administration. Please convey to your team EJ and the others how much we appreciate all the work. And Director or President Gray is accurate. We have a board meeting next week to close out the year. So I have nothing further. And with that, we are adjourned.